Good evening and welcome to the reorganization meeting of the Freehold Regional High School District Board of Education. My name is Sean Boyce, I am the Assistant Superintendent for Business and Board Secretary at the moment. I'm the Chairman from the Pem of the Board until we get the Board fully organized, which we'll do in a moment. First order of business is to report out the official election results. So, the Howell Township Representative, Mr. Peter Bruno, received 12,271 votes, 138 votes write-in. The English Town Borough Representative, Ms. Diana Capiello, received 9,594 votes, write-in 64. Freehold Borough Representative, Mr. Harold Heshi Moses, 9,822 votes, write-ins 123. And the Manhattan Township Representative, Mrs. Jennifer Sutera, with 9,390 votes, write-ins 61. So, at this time, I'd like to administer the oath of office and get our newly-elected Board members seated. Mrs. Capiello? If you could raise your right hand and repeat you.
I, Diana Capiello, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and in this state under the authority of the people, so help me God. I, Diana Capiello, do solemnly swear that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of Member of the Board of Education, and that I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS 19-4-1, nor disqualified due to conviction of a crime or offense listed in NJSA 18A12-1, and that I will faithfully and impartially and justly perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Thank you, Mrs. Capiello. Mrs. Sutera?
I, Jennifer Sutera, do solemnly swear to affirm that I will... I better get that paper, Diana, please. Sorry. I, Jennifer Sutera, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and this state under the authority of the people, so help me God. I, Jennifer Sutera, do solemnly swear that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of a Member of the Board of Education, and that I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS 19-4-1, nor disqualified due to conviction of a crime or offense listed in NJSA 18A12-1, and that I will faithfully and partially and fairly perform all the duties of the office according to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Thank you, Mr. Bruno.
I, Pete Bruno, solemnly affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of New Jersey and will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and this state under the authority of the people, so help me God. I, Pete Bruno, solemnly swear and affirm that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of Member of the Board of Education, that I am not disqualified pursuant to RS 19-4-1, nor disqualified due to conviction of a crime or offense listed in NJSA 18-12-1, that I will faithfully and partially and justly perform the duties of the office according to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Thank you, Mr. Moses.
I, Heshi Moses, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and this state under the authority of the people, so help me God.
I, Heshi Moses, do solemnly swear that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of a Member of a Board of Education, and that I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS 19-4-1, nor disqualified due to conviction of a crime or offense listed in NJSA 18A12-1, and that I will faithfully and partially and justly perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Thank you, and welcome, Board members. Okay, so I'm gonna take the roll. Ms. Rassitola?
President.
Mr. Bruno?
President.
Mrs. Capiello?
Here.
Mr. Corolla?
Here.
Mrs. Spankhauser?
Here.
Mrs. Lattin?
Here.
Mr. Messinger?
Here.
Mr. Moses?
Here.
Mrs. Sutera?
Here.
Thank you. So, the next order of business is the election of a President of the Board of Education according to Board policy. So, this is how that works. I will open the floor for nominations. Any Board member can nominate any other Board member. A second is not necessary. And when it becomes apparent that there are no further nominations, I will do one of two things. If there is only one nomination, then I will ask for a motion and a second to close nominations and instruct the Board Secretary to cast a unanimous ballot for the single candidate. If there are more than one nomination, the motion to close nominations will stand alone, and I'll ask for a motion and a second. And then we will vote for the office of President of the Board. Candidates will be voted on in the order that they were nominated. So, the yes-no vote will move through. Whoever was nominated first will have the roll of the vote, and each Board member will vote on that candidate. If that satisfies the requirement, which is more than half, which is the full Board's weighted majority of 4.6, is needed in order for the election of a President. If 4.6 isn't achieved, then we'll move to the next candidate and do the same thing. Okay? Any questions on the process?
I have a question.
Yes.
I think there was a misunderstanding. I don't know whether this is the last time or the time before. If you vote for a candidate, are you allowed to vote again for a different candidate?
Yes.
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 I'm sorry.
Go ahead. So, each vote stands alone on an island if you vote, so I'm doing this. So, the vote, you can vote yes on candidate one. Candidate one receives the weighted majority of votes, and we don't get to candidate two. Candidate one does not get the weighted majority, then when we get to candidate two, you are free to vote yes, yay, if you would like it. So, it's not in either poll.
Okay. Any other questions, clarifications necessary?
Yes, any.
Okay. So, I'm now going to open the floor for nominations. Second not necessary for the office of President of the Board of Education.
I'd like to nominate Carl Rassitola.
I'd like to nominate Mike Messenger.
Any further nominations? Okay, so I'm going to request a motion and a second to simply close nominations.
Is that...
Diana?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Just a check. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, that's successful. Okay. So, Mr. Rassitola was nominated first. So, the motion on the table will be for the election of Mr. Carl Rassitola as President of the Freehold Regional High School District Board of Education. It's a yes or no vote. Any comments prior to that? Okay. Mr. Rassitola?
Yes for myself.
Mr. Bruno?
No.
Mrs. Capiello?
No.
Mr. Corolla?
Yes.
Mrs. Spankhauser?
No.
Mrs. Lattin?
No.
Mr. Messinger?
No.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Mrs. Sutera?
Yes.
4.6, so the total of the affirmative votes is 4.6. So, that's a successful vote. So, congratulations, Mr. Rassitola.
Can I make a little statement?
Yes, sir.
The most important thing, I think, is the education. I'm doing this without any kind of preparation, but this is on... The most important thing, I believe, is the education of my children. I have learned over the past... While I worked four years as a Board member, then my son took over for three years, and now I'm back again for a three-year term. And I learned an awful lot during that time. I learned how valuable education is. I always dislike when people talk about the accomplishments of their own family, but in this case, I just want to illustrate something. My son graduated Yale. He also graduated Harvard. He's running the National Youth Orchestra of China now. And he really is instrumental in international relationships. All of that was possible because of the education that he got. Teachers don't make the money that a lot of people in business make, but they certainly deserve everything, everything. Because without teachers... I remember I didn't want to do algebra, but my dad made me. He used to smack me when I made a mistake, and you know. That was his system of teaching me. And I did extremely well in my career. I appreciate what everybody does on this board, and I particularly want to thank Mr. Harold Heshi Moses. See, I actually do know your name. And I'm gonna try to stop all the sarcasm, because this is a very, very serious business, and we have to move forward and do everything that we can to help the district. And Mr. Sampson, what can I tell you? Man, you proved yourself. You did things that I would never have done because it was too much work, and you don't care. You go out there, you put yourself on a limb, and I appreciate everything you do. And it's in all seriousness. And you know I send you 11:30 emails. My wife says, "Will you stop?" But I'm passionate about it, and thank you so much. And thank everybody on the board. And we're gonna be unified. Thank you. And thank you, Mike, for your service last year.
So, the Board for nominations for Vice President.
Okay, I'm going to open the floor for nominations for Vice President. Do I get to nominate?
I'd like to nominate...
Okay, go ahead.
Mr. President, you go. I'd like to nominate Mike Messenger.
Do I...
Yes, any member can nominate.
Okay, I'd like to nominate Jennifer Sutera.
Seeing no further nominations, I have a motion and a second to close nominations.
Motion.
I heard you. Mr. Bruno?
Second.
And second, Mr. Corolla. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So, the first roll call vote will be for Mr. Messinger for the office of Vice President of the Board of Education. And same rules apply, weighted majority of 4.6. So, Mr. Rassitola?
No.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mrs. Capiello?
Yes.
Mr. Corolla?
No.
Mrs. Spankhauser?
Yes.
Mrs. Lattin?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
No.
Mrs. Sutera?
No.
So, that motion failed. 4.4 is the total. So, we're gonna move on to Mrs. Sutera for the roll call vote for the office of Vice President of the Freehold Regional Board of Education. Mr. Rassitola?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
No.
Mrs. Capiello?
No.
Mr. Corolla?
Yes.
Mrs. Spankhauser?
No.
Mrs. Lattin?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
No.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Mrs. Sutera?
Yes.
Kathy was a yes.
Yeah.
5.1, agreed.
And that motion is successful with 5.1 of the vote. So, Mrs. Sutera, congratulations, and if you'd like to take your seat.
Okay, what I want to do is ask Mark Tiscano to do his ethics presentation. Mark, you ready?
Yes.
Okay, here we go.
It's already open, should be perfect. Good evening, everybody. Congratulations, everybody, welcome back. Good to see you again. As we do each year, this will be our overview of the School Ethics Act and training. Those of you that are back, I ask you again, please sign the acknowledgment of receipt form which is passed up to the center of the table to Sean's, so that we have everybody sign off. The first document in your packet is the copy of the slides. Second is the Code of Ethics for school Board members, which we require by statute to give to you, and to give you a copy of the Full Ethics Act as well. So, launching into this, as we do each year, we're gonna review and we're gonna do a review and analysis of the School Ethics Act itself. We're gonna highlight major areas of focus. As is typical, negotiations is an area that the School Ethics Commission, which is the administrative body that enforces the Act, has been focusing on a lot for the last year. We'll discuss the effect of staffing companies, district substitutes, non-traditional union memberships, interviewing candidates. Again, this was guidance put out about a year and a half ago, but this seemed to be a very big topic with the School Ethics Commission last year as well. And we're also gonna focus in on areas of attention within the last year. The School Ethics Commission, in particular, their advisory opinions focused on two areas: endorsement of candidates and volunteering. Again, that is a topic that they seem to keep coming back to. We've had a lot of discussion here on the Board about that. So, just kind of moving along, a quick review. The Board of Ed is the governing body of the school district. Its decision-making ability is limited. It cannot administer the districts, and it can't act in these situations without the recommendation of the superintendent. All personnel actions, no one gets hired, fired, transferred, or moved to the school district without the recommendation of the superintendent. All Board members and members of administration are governed by the Code of Ethics. What I always like to do is rather than give to you all 10 provisions of the Code of Ethics and just say, "Here, read these and look at them," I try to give them to you in some context. So, the first one I call is uphold the laws. As you can see, Board members have to uphold and enforce the laws, rules and regulations of state law and court orders pertaining to schools. What I also try to do as well, as you remember from prior presentations, is I give to you what the School Ethics Commission has put in the Administrative Code, what would be considered evidence of a finding of a violation. So, they've kind of narrowed it down for us and helped us avoid frivolous pleadings, because they're telling us exactly what they're looking for. What is interesting to note that in the last year, last calendar year of 2018, the School Ethics Commission issued over 25 decisions. In contrast, they only issued three advisory opinions, which is a diverse of prior years. You may remember, we're standing up here telling you that in one year, they released 33 advisory opinions and two decisions. So, they were very busy dealing with decisions. So, we do have some new decisions to look at. Thank, yes, Mr. Spankhauser?
Just a question about advisory opinions?
Yes.
How do they come about? Are they only at the request of a Board member or somebody who goes to the commission do them of their own accord?
I have not seen them do that in su sponti. They're a response to requests that come in. The process for an advisory opinion is spelled out on the website. I can tell you that generally, members of the public are not able to get advisory opinions as Board members and/or administrators of a school district, as well as Board attorneys can get advisory opinions if asked to do so by Boards of Education. So, some examples of the uphold the laws... Am I still there? I'm sorry, I'm too far in. Is... It doesn't like... Okay, we can't go back. So, I apologize. It's in the packet, we'll move forward. Recent decisions here. The School Ethics Commission wants, in order to find a violation of this tenet, if you're looking at the fifth slide, top of page three. Kind of straightforward here. Board members themselves can't issue rice notices. If the Board wants to issue rice notice, it has to go through the superintendent. There was a case last year involving the local Board of Education here in Monmouth County, where it was alleged that Board members violated this provision where they didn't follow the process set forth in their own policies. The Board failed to conduct a lottery for an allocation of high school-age students. It was a district that had a send-receive relationship, sending students to two different buildings. Because the Board didn't follow the lottery, that did not mean that they violated this provision of the Code of Ethics. This is a uphold the laws, state laws, and laws of the Commissioner of Education, not the local school district. Number two. Board members make decisions based on the educational welfare of children and seek to develop things in public schools and meet the individual needs of all students, regardless of race, color, creed. Kind of a very self-explanatory provision. A Board member here was found to violate the code when they leaked confidential information to the media to try to embarrass a fellow Board member. Clearly, that's not actions that appear towards the educational welfare of students. Interestingly, there have also been a number of other decisions whereby members of the public have challenged members of a Board of Education because they don't like the decision that the Board of Education made. Just because someone doesn't like a decision that somebody makes doesn't mean that that decision is not the best educational welfare of children. So, the School Ethics Commission will not weigh into disagreements about a particular decision that has been made. The third provision, this is as we start to get into the main thrust here, is Board members are limited to policymaking. Policy, planning, and appraisal, that is the function and key role of a Member of a Board of Education. And Boards are agreed to both frame policies and plans, while yet to the Board consults those that are affected by it. There were some decisions in this one. For example, as I was saying before, just because there's disagreement with the policy that a Board enacted with the prior provision doesn't mean it wasn't the best educational welfare of students. Here, you had a Member of the community file... It was not only a Member of the community, but it was a President of a local teachers' union file an ethics charge against a Board member last year because they claimed that the Board of Education took action on a personnel matter that was against what the will of the community wanted. It was the non-renewal of an employee. A lot of people came out, spoke out in favor of the employee, but the Board decided to non-renew the employee anyway. And just because they did that, that again, did not mean that the Board violated this provision of the Ethics Act. So, you know, we're kind of clarifying this. Again, they are not going to get into disagreements about decisions that are made. They're gonna look solely at the confines of the Act itself. Another decision that came out last year, even though it was doctored from 2015, is the last case point. This was a long, long, drawn-out ethics case. It was determined that three Board members violated this provision in limiting their actions to policymaking when they were present, voting in executive session on a settlement agreement that dismissed not only a civil litigation that was brought against the district, but also ethics charges that were brought against them individually. So, there was a finding by the Ethics Commission that by being present in executive session, discussing the settlement agreement, and voting on it, that they were not limiting their roles to policy, planning, and appraisal, and in fact, were gaining a benefit, which was the dismissal of the ethics charge itself. A big one that we see a lot of is no micromanaging. You know, Boards of Ed carry out the responsibility of administering schools, but to see that they are well-run. I also call this no giving direct orders to school personnel. Board members are required to go through the superintendent and/or the Assistant Superintendent for Business Administration for certain items. You can kind of see where I list a lot of case points. These are areas of kind of hot topics. You know, for example, an example of micromanaging. You had a Board member violate this provision of the code when he unilaterally decided to visit a school, take pictures of open windows in the school, and items in the Board Office bathroom, which he then proceeded to speak to reporters about, hold a press conference outside. Again, that's clearly overstepping, that's clearly micromanaging. Another case instance is when a Board member went into the guidance office on his own, requested a copy of SAT reports, went to the boys' locker room, inspected lockers, again, took pictures, and even sat in the cafeteria and ate lunch with the students in order to express his concerns about the quality, the lack thereof, of the food service. So, again, you can kind of see, they're pretty obvious. Number five is no personal promises or private action. Board members must recognize the authority vested with the body. No one individual is more powerful than the other, with the exception of the Board President, and that is limited by statute. Really, it deals with matters of personnel. The Board's President needs to be contacted if there is a personnel matter that takes place in between Board meetings. Usually, it requires the consent of the Board President. For example, the suspension or replacement of administrative staff and certain other actions. But again, those have to be reported to the full Board the next time a Board is meeting. So, any information the Board President comes into in between sessions must then be shared with the Board when the Board comes back. Yep. Some examples here of taking no personal promises for private action. You know, there was one this past year. It was alleged that a Board President violated the Act because in between two Board meetings, a facility use request came in for a funeral reception. It was gonna be held at one of the Board's properties. Because of the timing of the request, when it came in and when the event was supposed to take place, the superintendent reached out, asked the Board President for his or her consent. The Board President said, "Yes, I consent. What is your feeling?" The superintendent said, "I approve of the request. We've approved these type of requests in the past." It was then at the next meeting brought in and discussed. One Board member... One board member took issue because they felt that the request was only honored because it was for a perceived political friend of the board president. However, when they looked backwards, there was precedent going back five years where these types of requests were granted for members of the community. No personal gain. Board members refuse to surrender their independent judgments to special interests or partisan political groups or to use the schools for personal gain or the gain of friends. Here, one case from last year, it was alleged where a board president received but did not share with the full board a confidential memorandum from the municipal governing body wherein it expressed concerns about a board member's conduct during a traffic stop. Board president advised the board member to inform the rest of the board as to what happened by a date. Otherwise, the board president was going to do so. The incident was very publicly discussed. Everybody in the community knew about it. Allegation was that by not sharing the memo with the full board that came in from the municipality, when, as soon as it came in, that the board president was engaging in a cover-up. That was not the case. It was discussed at the next meeting. And getting to that provision that I'm talking about, that there is the sharing of information with fellow board members when we get back together. The idea that it was for personal political gain, again, because it was alleged that the board president was covering up the misdeeds of a board member who was perceived to be a political ally or friend. An advisory opinion that keeps popping up, I just want to highlight, was there was a board member who did not see eye to eye with the superintendent. He had been terminated from the district previously, had filed ethics charges against the superintendent, and as soon as he got elected, his first piece of action was to call for a vote of no confidence. Ethics Commission found that, yes, that's a personal vendetta, that's clearly seeking to use the office for personal gain, and that board member was disqualified from any further consultative or actions with superintendent. Not had that here, since I've been for the board, I don't think anyone here has any such access to grime. Number seven is maintain confidentiality of all matters pertaining to the schools which should disclose, may easily injure individuals, or the schools itself. In all other matters, board members must provide accurate information. This was interesting because there was two cases within the last year that have come out. The first was, the school district had a member of the public that would send a number of emails to the Board of Education. An Oprah request came in for those emails. The board turned those over in response to the Oprah request. That member of the community did not appreciate some of their more colorful language being disseminated and posted on social media in that community, and filed an ethics complaint against the district and superintendent claiming that they disclosed confidential information because the member of the public put at the bottom of her emails, "This email is confidential." Doesn't work. Emails that come to the Board of Education unless they deal with a specific student are subject to the Open Public Records Act. And so, the allegation that the board failed to maintain confidentiality was dismissed. In a hotly contested board member campaign, a board member was accused of lying to the public on six occasions, some in public meetings, some on public Facebook, in connection with their candidacy. And the Ethics Commission found that because the false statements were limited to the board member's candidacy, not to business of the board itself, it was not a violation of the School Ethics Act. So, you can kind of see where they're drawing that fine line. Number eight, consider the superintendent's recommendation. Board members vote to appoint the best qualified personnel after consideration of the recommendation of the chief administrative officer. You know, I always kind of point out here to every board of education that you have to consider the superintendent's recommendation. That does not mean, though, that you are a rubber stamp, that is a blank check. However, you cannot refuse or reject the recommendation administration for reasons that are arbitrary, capricious, unreasonable, or illegal, such as discriminatory or bias. You know, it's kind of, that's a big case point here. You know, there was an advisory opinion, and this was kind of building out of the interview process and limiting board members. Selection of candidates for district positions and making recommendations is the sole responsibility to the superintendent. Prior to the recommendations from the School Ethics Commission's decision, board members are to have no role in that process. And yet, that is a change from prior guidance that was released. Board members must support school district personnel in the proper performance of their duties. Some cases that came out within the last year, there was a district where the local association took issue with the decision of the building principal and the superintendent to allow a special education parent to come into the classroom and observe a proposed placement. A placement was proposed by the child study team, and the parent came in and said, "I'd like to see this program." School district said, "Yes, come on in." Under the Administrative Code, in Special Ed, it allowed to review a proposed placement. Teachers' Union took issue because the board's policy said teachers are required to get twenty, are supposed to get twenty-four hours' notice of the fact that a parent is coming. The Ethics Commission said, "No, that is not required." And because the board made the decision, and the superintendent made the decision not to give that type of advance notice, it is not a violation of the School Ethics Act. It was not an instance of the administration not, and board not supporting school district personnel. And as I always love to point out, my Facebook point at the bottom, this is one of the few instances where a board member was actually removed for such flagrant violations. A president of a board of ed violated its provision by posting comments on his Facebook page and a link to the picture of the superintendent with the quote, "Now, we'll link you to something about the local terrorists that destroy our dreams and our futures." So, that gentleman was removed for the board vacation, did not permit it to run again.
Mark, can I ask you something?
Oh.
What was the due process that was, obviously, I agree with you, removal, but was the due process that occurred to remove him?
It was, so, an ethics complaint was filed. The board president was given notice of that complaint. He was provided an opportunity to respond. School Ethics Commission reviewed the complaint when it came in. They determined it was probable cause for violation. They forwarded it over to the administrative log, conducted a hearing. Administrative law judge was...
Fuming.
Fuming at the comment. There was no denying them, they were there. And so, then, there's a recommended decision. The School Ethics Commission, that publicly votes at its public meetings to adopt that decision and issue recommendations.
Did it take a long time?
So, there's the levels, and I apologize. So, the levels that the Ethics Commission issues, the first level is a reprimand, the second is a censure, and the third is suspension and/or removal of the board member.
Does it take a long time, Mark?
I don't know, from start to finish. I think the decision only issues the date when it came out. It's got a case number of 2011, and Facebook has been around for quite some time. I'll look into that and let you know before the next meeting when that happens.
That's fine. Nobody here is going to talk something stupid.
I didn't realize I hit the hand over the hour already. Number ten is, board members have to recall complaints to the chief administrator and act on complaints at public meetings, only after administrative examples have been exhausted. Example for this has been violated, I gotta slow down. Board members violate the code here by going to the principal directly in connection with a parent complaint, rather than referring the complaint to the superintendent. Board members are required, if somebody comes up to you in the Appy, or the Shoprite, or whatever food store, or in Target, and are complaining to you, or they send you an email complaining about an issue relating to the school, you are required to refer that to the superintendent. Board members are also, this is another one that has come up recently, board members are not permitted to meet with members of the association without the superintendent being present. So, again, not happened here. Other school districts, you know, that has cropped up. Again, it is the administration's job to administer the schools. Conflicts, some definitions. We finally, as I've said, last year, we got some clarity. You see that, of course, in New Jersey, we have two laws that deal with conflicts, using the same terms but defining them differently. The left-hand column is the School Ethics Act, which uses the terms members of immediate family, relative, and others. The right-hand column is the nepotism regulations that were promulgated in 2008, as part of fiscal accountability regulations. What I can tell you now happily is that we've gotten clarity, because we had this group called others, we didn't know who they were, what they were. Now, others have been defined to be relatives. Why is that key? Because we have gotten, in the last year, even more clarification about who can and cannot participate in negotiations. So, first one is a board member who is currently, or has an immediate family member that is currently a member of a statewide public teachers' union but in another school district. Cannot participate in negotiations or any of the aspects of negotiations until a memorandum of agreement has been signed and voted on. Once that is done, that member can then vote on the successor collective negotiations agreement. We've employed that here in the past. That is not a change. Another provision we've got clarification, a board member as an immediate family member who is employed in the district, and again, that chart tells you who is an immediate family member. They cannot participate in any aspect of negotiations, including the vote on the successive successor agreement. The next one is a new one that we've got some clarification on. A board member who has any relative that is employed within the school district cannot participate in any aspect of negotiations, including the vote on successor agreement following the attainment of the MOA. So, it used to be a delineation, used to have, say, okay, well, the board member has a relative who is a member of, let's say, NJPSA. They then could participate in negotiations for units that are affiliated with the NJDA or they were affiliated with an outside community group. No longer. They have said that if you have a relative in the district, not permitted to participate. The last one is a board member with a relative who is currently a member by any statewide public teachers' union or works in another district, might be able to participate in negotiations once we go through an analysis. Again, I'm a chart person. I tried to break that down here for you pretty succinctly. All of you know that each year I put together the chart that I hand out to each one of you, listing what you can and cannot participate in under the School Ethics Act, and the votes that you have to abstain from. So, I'll be putting that together prior to our next meeting and sure to get to all of you. But I want to kind of give you the basis for how and why we go through it. Again, I do apologize if I have to sit with you and ask you those three questions up there. I'm not trying to be intrusive or trying to personalize the lives of your family, but we are required to go into a deep level. Okay, so, we got some clarification within the last year. Cousins are not conflicts. There was a question, is the cousins are not listed as relatives within the School Ethics Act? We finally got some clarification that cousins, first, second, third, or through marriage, are not deemed a relative or an immediate family member. What does that mean? That means it does not disqualify a board member from participating in negotiations or participating in votes relating to certain aspects of that employee's employment here in the district or supervision. Staffing companies, if you have an immediate family member who is employed by a source for teachers, Insight, or any of the other staffing companies, that is not a conflict that would keep you out of negotiations or keeping you from voting on matters relating to individuals that supervise those people. Flip side, though, if you have a relative who is a member employed by the district as an in-house, the district does not contract out its staffing, then that relationship would preclude you from participating in votes regarding those who supervise that employee. If you have a membership in a, I went too fast, I apologize, a non-traditional teachers' union, for example, if you were a member of the AFL-CIO, or a local electric union, plumbers' union, what have you, that does not affect your participation in negotiations itself. The interview process, I just put this in, included, not had this issue come up here for your original, but every now and then it crops up in some other districts that we work in. Again, the School Ethics Commission does not support board members conducting interviews for any position, any position below that of superintendent. The only position that they think board members should be conducting themselves interviews for is the position of superintendent. If the superintendent allows it, board members can be present for interviews for certain positions, but not ask questions. They're not to participate. The Ethics Commission's been pretty clear on that. Endorsement of candidates, this is a bit of a change. This came out in June of last year. This is one I just want to take some time with. During the campaign, the board election campaign, the local teachers' union decided on its own to endorse a certain board member's reelection. That board member served on the negotiations committee. They had reached a settlement prior to the election. The NJDA jumped in and helped the local association support and campaign for that board member. They sent out flyers and mailers on behalf of that candidate. The question came in as to whether or not because of that endorsement, because of that affirmative support, was that something that would preclude that board member from serving on either finance or serving on the negotiations committee when the next year came up? Because clearly, this was somebody who the union was allowing to get on the committee. Leader died, the SEC stated that that does not create a conflict, because in their view, only financial contributions will result in that. Now, they noted that legitimate collectivity without mores, such as a contribution intended to influence a board member, does not violate the Act or create conflict. Why I'm highlighting this is there was longstanding guidance from the School Ethics Commission that was in place up until the last year, that if the local teachers' union endorsed a board candidate during an election cycle, that board member was required to not participate in negotiations during that next term. So, it was something that they had really clamped down on, and this is a 180-degree change. This was a pretty big change that they passed through in June of last year.
But that's true even with the fact that they provided mailers.
Yes, mailers, yeah.
I mean, it's not money, but it's still costly.
I agree with you. They found that the mailers were not a, were not an incentive, were not an endorsement. In their mind, contributions, they're only monetary, which is, I think, is scary, oppressive, especially as we have elections now in November. It's something I...
Something that had to, that didn't have to report to the Electoral Department.
Well, if it was money, if it was over, I believe ELEX is in the level of $300. If it's over $300 in cash, it would have to be...
They require in-kind contributions to be reported.
So, you might have to report. Amy, can you speak into the microphone so I can hear you?
Sorry.
The question was, isn't that an in-kind contribution? Because if the value of the in-kind contribution exceeds $300, it has to be reported under ELEX laws, and you're right. But again, this is guidance I don't agree with. I would probably still, I'm conservative when it comes to these type of visions, because my job is to guide, protect the body and each member, so I would advise patience. The last one is volunteering and PTA involvement. And this is, we've had a lot of discussions, because there's been a lot of advisory opinions in the last three years on volunteering. So, the question was whether a newly-elected board member was still allowed to serve in the following PTA positions: president, represented by the district's communications committee, home repair, home repair coordinator, coordinator, movie night coordinator, field day. This was a very involved parent. God bless him. The Ethics Commission, again, reminded us that when it comes to volunteering, they look to the degree of involvement of a board member that they have with staff and students, as well as the degree to which the board member has authority to give and receive directions and orders to staff during the activity. That's been their guidance for the last four years, as they kind of tried to walk back their edict in 2015, that board members should not be volunteering in schools. The SEC found that a home repair, home repair coordinator, coordinator, coordinator of field day, those were passive involvements, meaning they would defer to the authority of the building principal while they were there. So, they found that it was not a violation. The other, did I get that again? Okay. They did find that the role of PTA president and substitute member of the district communications committee were also not widespread direction from staff. Again, we're getting into that degree of interaction with staff, and so that was also appropriate. So, the one thing the Ethics Commission really stressed in this... So, the one thing the Ethics Commission really stressed in this opinion that they issued in April of last year was they remind board members, when you are volunteering in the district, reach out to the superintendent, let the superintendent know you're going to be there, and also make sure that you are advising if you're in a building, make sure the building principals know that you're going to be there, and that you're going to be there in your capacity as a volunteer, not as a board member. My recommendation is do it through email, so there's a documented trail. I apologize if I went over a little bit. That's where we are. Any questions, anybody? Yes?
I can't find the page right now. I thought it was on page four.
Page four, sure.
I thought it was page four.
Yeah.
Somewhere in here it says, has to do with like writing a letter to the editor, to my bed about the budget.
That's in providing accurate information, yes.
It's on page nine, I'm sorry. It says advisor opinion 0206. So long as you do not hold yourself out as a board member and the information is accurate, it's not confidential. I thought you were supposed to say, I am writing, I am a board member, but I'm writing in my personal capacity.
The idea is to, yes, indicate, I am a member of the board vacation. However, I'm speaking for myself as a private citizen, and I'm not speaking on behalf of the board.
And then just one other question. You said something about board members are not to meet with members of the leadership of the association?
Yes, board members are not to meet with members of the local association without the superintendent present, unless, unless it's through either the collective negotiations process or through the grievance process, which is outlined in the grievance.
So what do you do if you have a parent who has a child, whose teacher is a member of the union?
In that instance, you're meeting, I got it, I understand. In that instance, board members meeting with the teacher as a parent, not as a board member. What this is, what I was talking about is instances where, you know, sometimes you have newly elected board members who come on, there may have been some strikes, some unhappy teachers, a little rough negotiations, you have the red shirts, blue hats, whatever, at the board meeting, come out. The new board members come on, like, we're going to handle this. And they're going to sit down themselves, they're going to sit with the association directly, hear what their issues are, and you know, we don't want the superintendent present, because you know, the superintendent's part of the problem in our view, which, that's not allowed. The board cannot usurp superintendent's authority and directive with respect to staff, including dealing with the union on data and issues. You're welcome.
Mark, we're going to go 15 minutes for executive session and come back. So, we need a motion to do that. Can I have a motion to do that?
Second.
Second, Mr. Heskey. Okay, all approved? Okay, we'll be back in 15 or so minutes. Okay, we're ready to start. My name is Carl Acetola, and I just was elected as a board president, and I'm here to serve the public. So, I'm very happy about that, and I'm very impressed and honored to work for Freehold Regional. I've been with the district, I would really say, four, three, then seven, and two years, so nine years. And I've been coming to meetings probably three years before then. So, I'm very, very impressed with the district, and we want to move forward and make it as best this weekend. Let's start out formally. Pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Laws of 1975, this meeting notice was sent to the Asbury Park Press on May 15, 2018, and has been duly advertised in the Asbury Park Press, issued, issued of May 18, 2018. All municipal clerks of the townships and boroughs within the regional high school district have been duly notified, and requirements of the posting of notices have been met on May 15, 2018. Now, if we could all rise for the legislative meetings. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the public for its standing, one nation, undivisible, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we're going to do reorganization items that are on the agenda, 3, 1 through 6.
Motion. Second.
Any discussion on those?
Mr. Acetola?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mrs. Capiello?
Yes.
Mr. Corolla?
Yes.
Mrs. Fankhauser?
Yes.
Mrs. Ladd?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Ed.
Mrs. Sitter?
Yes.
We're going into the minutes now on motion to second.
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor? All those in favor, opposed, or abstained?
I didn't. Mr. Acetola?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mrs. Capiello?
Yes.
Mr. Corolla?
Yes.
Mrs. Fankhauser?
Yes.
Mrs. Ladd?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Ed.
Mrs. Sitter?
Yes.
You have any names? We're going to have some board reports now, if anyone has the board report.
I'm sorry. Superintendents, superintendents.
Superintendents' reports.
Thank you, Mr. Heskey. So, a few, a few items for this evening. So as I've said repeatedly over the past several months, the Freehold Regional High School District is facing what amounts to devastating aid reduction over the next seven years. There are a lot of balls in the air presently, working to mitigate that situation as much as possible. Two of those avenues that we are pursuing is suing as a result of what the formula S2 and what the School Funding Form Act has been interpreted, the most recent interpretation of the School Funding Form Act. And so, the Freehold Regional High School District has moved forward with the collection of approximately 10 other districts in the state facing significant reductions. All very different stories, which is part of the larger problem of how the aid is determined in each of our communities and what that looks like. But there are, in our estimation, some real difficulties and problems with how our ability to pay has been determined in relation to our property wealth and what those numbers actually look like. I can say that the, the cost per pupil in this district is approximately $3,000 less than what the average cost is across the state. So, we operate frugally to begin with. The aid reduction over the next seven years will be phased in to the $25 million. That is a financial cliff for the school district, period. So, we are pursuing legal remedies. We are working with our local legislators to bring that, bring our case forward, and to hopefully have folks look at the funding formula itself and some of the difficulties with it, in addition to taking a look at some matters like special education, extraordinary aid, for instance, which is the aid you receive for some of your media students. That has been funded at approximately 56% in the last budget year. The Freehold Regional High School District, what that means is we were short of $2.5 million from funding for some of our media students. So, we're hoping for relief along that line. We're hoping to address the funding formula itself, and we're hoping that the local legislators who represent our communities and our families will take action to hopefully pull us off the path that we're on currently. The other action that we've taken is we've formed a group with approximately 70 other school districts across the state to directly lobby Trenton. We have formed a legislative committee off of those districts, of which I'm a member. We're actually meeting on Wednesday to begin to outline our next steps with what we need to do to bring attention to the situation. I cannot in my heart of hearts believe that the intent to fund the districts that have been underfunded over the past decade or so was designed to come at the expense of other districts. I didn't, I don't believe that, and a colleague of mine has said this repeatedly, that in New Jersey, our choice is about educating some children at the expense of others. I think that the formula itself needs to be looked at. We've talked about it repeatedly here. Mr. Boyce and I crafted testimony to Senate Ed Committee in 2015 outlining some of our significant concerns with it. And we continue to maintain those concerns today. And we will certainly do everything in our power over the next months and years, if it takes that, to get us off of the path that we're on for the school system. Because the system, the economy of scale that is here at a regional high school district is absolutely profound. And what we do, it comes at often a lower cost than other districts. But at the end of the day, our classes are not tiny. Our core courses are already running 25 to 28 to 30 deep. And there's nowhere to go with some of these reductions over the next several years without fundamentally impacting the program that we have for our kids in this district. So, we'll continue to move forward. There is a meeting on Wednesday in Brick Township that we'll be attending with the districts that are, that have signed on to the lawsuit, which we're a member. We've also begun the process this week for our eighth grade orientations. So that's underway in the six high schools over the next couple of weeks. We are undergoing CUSAC this year. CUSAC is the state monitoring that occurs every three years or so for districts, depending on the schedule. It's interesting, the previous regime at the Department of Education put much more emphasis on park participation as part of the scoring in CUSAC. And so, we know going into the evaluation, the monitoring, that we're not going to do well in that area, period, because we're a high school only district, and a significant number of our students refused to take the test and did not have to take the test. And so those numbers will come to haunt us in CUSAC. The irony of all of this, of course, is that the state appellate court just last week or week and a half ago struck down park, as it's currently rendered in New Jersey, is unconstitutional. Now, we're in a holding pattern as a result of that, so the guidance from the Department of Ed is to, is literally to do nothing at this point in time, other than to maintain the status quo. What that looks like moving forward is potentially a significant impact. You know, for perspective, the federal requirement for testing requires one test, either mathematics or ELA at the high school level. The park system, as it was rolled down in 2016, had upwards of seven for students to take. Its implementation was a disaster, frankly. I think any of us in the field know that. And drawing back from that and moving forward to what that looks like as we move out, I'm not certain what that's going to, going to look like. There is certainly, the governor had campaigned on the premise of moving away from park. You may have state testing, but not for graduation requirements. You may have one test, as it's currently constituted, and the ELC and ACLU were instrumental in the lawsuit. It's supposed to be in the junior year. Currently, the graduation requirements were at the English Language Arts, grade 10, and Algebra 1. That was deemed unconstitutional. So where it ultimately lands, I'm not certain. We protested vigorously to the CUSAC scoring of park participation and what that looks like. And so to give everyone perspective, there are five areas to CUSAC. You score anywhere up to 100 points, and you're a high performing district. If you're over 80 of that 100 in any of those five categories. We have always been high performing, and it hasn't even been close, you know. We've been 95 plus in all five categories, CUSAC after CUSAC after CUSAC. We will be again, with the exception of our numbers around two things, around park participation and around chronic absenteeism. And frankly, the chronic absenteeism as a high school only district, pretty much are, a significant portion of our students are chronically absent, and there's some problems in that formula that we've asked the DOE to address. Most importantly, it's just based on your average attendance. And so a student, with the increase especially over the past decade or so of students who have long-term absences due to anxiety, things of that nature, all those numbers get factored into the average. And as a high school only district, our attendance is slightly lower than what it is in a K to begin with, because our students are often traveling, going on college visits, doing things of that nature that are not necessarily indicative of them missing school. And so just the way that it forms out is problematic for us. We did write when that was adopted as a component to CUSAC and how we are evaluated. I did write to the DOE, I did write to the individuals that had been contracted by the DOE to do this work and pointed out where we felt that some of the data was incredibly misleading and difficult to justify, and that they weren't necessarily serving the end that they were seeking to serve in looking that way. You know, but that, just like the meeting that we had at the time, and I want to clarify this was the previous regime, about park participation numbers fell on deaf ears. Even the way in which we're evaluated, we, you know, we were concerned. When you look at your scores in Algebra 1, for instance, most accelerated math students take Algebra 1 park in eighth grade. And so those numbers aren't even reflected in our district in huge portions. So, just problematic with how it's played out. We'll see where they go with the court case. The DOE had 30 days at that time to appeal to the state Supreme Court. We're not certain where that might head. The further convolution of all this is if the governor is a one-term governor and there's new leadership, we might pivot once again. And I think that, you know, the political pivoting ultimately just, there's a price to what we're trying to do in schools from time to time. Other than that, I just want to thank Mr. Messinger for his past years as president of the board. I don't, you know, this is a big place, and there's often a lot happening. And that's, that's volunteer work. And so, you know, thank you, Michael. I really appreciated the work that you did over the past year.
Thanks.
And I concur with that, Michael. Thank you. Thank you. Chuck, if I might say one thing regarding my thoughts about the cutback that we are facing, which is very severe. It comes down to, in my opinion, votes. In the urban areas, there's a lot more votes, and that's where the politicians want to get those votes. That's how I feel about it. We pay the most tax. I think we should also, you know, get benefit from that. Never forget, we had a, what's Dursa's, Rose Scholar coming from this district. We had some of the, probably the greatest student ever in New Jersey came from this district. This is a fabulous district, and it should be funded. And please do everything that you can to campaign for the funding of it. My thoughts, and that's it. Heshy, I know we spoke about that. Do you have something to say?
Yeah, it's all political. You know, it doesn't matter whether you're Democrat or Republican. Politicians should not be involved in education, period.
So true. Okay. Now we're on to public participation. Do you have a list?
Before you get started with that, if I could just ask Mr. Acetola to update the executive session resolution.
Yeah, just so the record's clear, in addition to the items listed on tonight's agenda, the board discussed some additional topics, first being, with exception to number three, in addition to the Nebraska Intonation Goal Report, the board did discuss review of concerns regarding the honors band program. With respect to box number seven, the board did discuss potential Title IX issues in connection with athletic programs. And the board also discussed in box eight, matters of personnel. So, other than that, it was...
Sean, do we have anybody for public participation? Is there anyone that's on a list, or?
No one has signed up.
No one has signed up, so I guess we can move forward to personnel and negotiations. And let's take H1 through L1 in one shot, so we can move this quickly. Do I have a motion for that?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, Heshy's second. Take your roles, Sean. Any discussion, please?
Mr. Acetola?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes, except for L1, Jeanette Bruno, Professional Development Workshops, and Charles Sampson, Professional Development and Workshops.
Thank you. Ms. Capiello?
Yes, on everything, except L1. I'm going to abstain on professional workshops, Mr. Sampson and Dr. Bezos.
Thank you. Mr. Corolla?
Yes.
Ms. Fankhauser?
Yes.
Ms. Ladd?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Ms. Suter?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion passes. I'm asking Sean for some coaching here, because this is my first night at this, and did we just move to new business? Let's go to new business. I'm sorry. What? Old business. Any old business from the board? Okay, so let's move on to new business. Any new business?
Can I say something?
Absolutely.
I don't know if it falls into new business, but I just really wanted to make a comment that I don't know that anybody, I'm sure you know, but over the weekend, a tech ed teacher that retired from Lynnellton High School, long-term tech ed teacher, Mr. Pines, passed away. And I wanted to add a personal note to this. My son is 34. As my son was going through Lynnellton High School, until he found the electronics program in Mr. Pines, I don't think he knew the direction he was going. And he found the direction. He would spend three and four periods a day in Mr. Pines' class, once he found him. He was a mentor, he was a friend, and I just want to reiterate that that's the kind of teachers we have, okay? They're not here just for the job, they're here for the kids. And as time went on, my son is now a tech ed teacher himself, and as they grew and got older, besides being a mentor, he became a friend. And I just think it's really important that we remember that we need to be appreciative of the teachers that we have here, and the things that they do. It's not, you know, nine to three, and they're out the door. So, I just wanted to pass that along, and personally, I'm thankful to the Pines family that he came into the Capiello life. Thank you.
Ms. Capiello, I never met Mr. Pines, but I would propose a moment of silence for him. Please, everyone, let's take one moment, and I'll hit the gavel at the end of that. Thank you so much for bringing that up. Any other new business, or we're going to motion to adjourn?
Second?
Second. I hope that cop's not there to get me. I have no warrants. So, are you all those in favor? Thank you, everybody, for your vote of support.